Finance Committee to order. The Chair would entertain a motion on the consideration of claims.
Your Honor, I'd like to make an motion on claims. For five hundred and thirty-nine thousand ninety-seven dollars and forty-three cents payroll liabilities. For May twenty-ninth in the amount of three hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and two dollars and eighty-seven cents. For a total paid of nine hundred and four thousand thirty, thirty cents.
Second.
Thank you. All right, um, so is there any comments on the bills this evening?
See that we've, uh, paid out a considerable sum for the airport, but I, I saw nothing else that was significant. Hundred and ten thousand, hundred and eleven thousand. And fifty, fifty-seven thousand for solid waste.
That's Kyle's favorite.
Throw that in there.
Both Kyle's favorite.
Anything?
One other question, Your Honor. Uh, on this, uh, Burns and McDonald Engineering, where is that? Uh, twenty-three thousand, is that for our, still our new water system up on the hill?
Your Honor, that's for the, uh, transmission line that's gonna be part of Phase Three, which moves from the hill towards River View.
So we have a complete circle.
Basically, redundancy in that area.
Thank you.
Councilwoman? All right, and then, um, so those last couple of pages, those, are those the out-of-budget items then?
Yes, Your Honor.
All right, and so, really not very, really doesn't add up to all that much in the end, um, and that will be addressed next week? When are we doing the?
Oh, Your Honor, that will, that'll be addressed on the June thirtieth meeting that we'll have.
June thirtieth, okay.
So we have five Tuesdays in this month, and so we'll have next week off, and then the last meeting, and then we'll be meeting at five forty-five. For the Finance Committee, have a six o'clock meeting and probably be done at six fifty.
Okay. Right. And I don't have any other questions either, so all in favor of the bills, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Is there anything else for us tonight, Stephen?
No, Your Honor.
All right, with that, meeting adjourned. I now call the June sixteenth, twenty fifteen, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P M. Mayor Baker will be attending the meeting tonight telephonically and has appointed me to act as the Chair for tonight's meeting. Would Councilwoman Gibbon please lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and then following that, Councilmember Larson will lead us in an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to serve here at our Riverton. As Riverton Council and to help our citizens have a better life. Father bless us that we might have insight into things that we are proceeding to do with this evening. We might have wisdom to do the right thing. Holy Father, we ask this in thy name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Uh, would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jonathan Fabian.
Here. And I believe that Mayor Baker's here.
Mayor Baker.
And I am here on the telephone.
Yes, thank you.
All right, I declare that we have a quorum this evening, and there's no need to excuse anyone. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda. Um, I did have a request to pull the final item from consent agenda.
Your Honor, I would like to have the open container permit, uh, pulled from the agenda to discuss right after the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, um. The agenda is approved. At this time, we will have communication from the floor and citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Please speak into the microphone so that those watching on television can hear you and the tape recorder can pick it up as well.
Good evening, Chairman, Councilmembers, thank you. Uh, my name's Eric Carr, I'm the Vice President of the Riverton Rendezvous Committee, and this is Georgia Davis, our President. The Riverton Rendezvous Committee would like to thank the City of Riverton for its continued support. For those of you who may be unfamiliar with our event, we host several family-oriented activities in mid-July centering around the Riverton Rendez- Rendezvous Balloon Festival. Our events are fully self-funded through generous donations from our wonderful community. We are much stronger because of your presence and your cooperation. We would also like to specifically thank Ms. Courtney Bollander as, uh, for her continued participation as our organization's treasurer. Thank you. Wonderful job.
Thank you. Tonight, we are very excited to invite you all to help us kick off our thirty-fifth annual Riverton Rendezvous. This year, we have twenty-eight balloons joining us, so we will have a sky full of beautiful balloons. We have presented each of you with a, uh, schedule of events as well as this year's rendezvous pin. And, um, we ask that you please check your calendars and, uh, join us if you can for this year's rally. We, um, typically have representatives from the city join us at the tailgate party to help judge sandwiches and give awards. Um, the, um, the city also gives our pilots gifts. And, um, and we have a representative from the city come and do that, so we would love to have you. And, uh, the date of the, uh, sandwich making is the eighteenth of July. But please join us for the entire weekend, starting with, um, the media day flight with the balloons, starting, uh, July seventeenth.
Uh, in closing, we'd, uh, like to thank you for your appreciate or consideration of our fireworks permit. Uh, I think everybody in town enjoys that, and we look forward to your attendance. Uh, the fireworks will be held at the Valley View on the. Enjoy.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric and Georgia, for coming and speaking to us, and congratulations, thirty-five years.
It is.
That's amazing.
Yes, thank you.
Very cool. All right, anyone else who would like to speak to the council?
Your Honor, from the Finance Committee.
Um, we'll do that in just a second.
That's on the consent agenda.
All right, so would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minutes June second, two thousand and fifteen, regular council meeting, approval of the minutes June ninth, two thousand and fifteen, work session council meeting. Approval of the minutes June sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, Finance Committee meeting, approval of Finance Committee recommendations for June sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. And approval of the municipal court report for the month of May two thousand and fifteen.
And. Dialogue, please.
So moved. Your Honor, um, I'd like to request the following claims be read into the bill or to Finance Committee approved this afternoon. Bills paid five hundred and thirty-nine thousand ninety-seven dollars and forty-three cents payroll liabilities for May twenty-ninth in the amount of three hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and two dollars and eighty-seven cents for a total paid of nine hundred and fourth. Nine hundred thousand, nine hundred and four thousand thirty cents.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Motion, Your Honor, motion to approve the ag- consent agenda. Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Now, we will, uh, look at the open container permit application that was pulled from consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read that item by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, the city clerk's office received an open container permit application from Andrea Gagnon. Uh, for July first, two thousand and fifteen, for a birthday party at Sunset Park from eleven A M to seven P M.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion regarding this open container permit?
I move to, uh, open the, uh, to approve the consent agenda, I mean, I'm sorry, the, uh, open permit for Sunset Park.
Do we have a second? All right, thank you. Is there any discussion on this item?
Your Honor, I had a few, uh, few calls and, and emails, uh, against having, uh, open, uh, beers and, and stuff at City Park for, at Sunset Park for a birthday party for a one-year-old. And that was been brought to me by some of the citizens in Riverton.
Um, would you like to approach the podium and identify yourself?
Hi, I'm Andrea Gagnon, I'm the one that put in for the permit. Um, the way that we were doing it, because we have lots of families that are coming in from different states, um, we were gonna put up a canopy and have it corded off so that there is no way for the children or any underage drinking to occur. They are gonna be accompanied by parents. That is also gonna double as a smoking section for those people that smoke, so that we're not picking up cigarette butts and stuff from all over the park. It's gonna be a very contained section, and it's, um, I think my canopy is like twelve by twelve. So, um, there isn't a whole lot of people that are gonna consume alcohol, I just didn't want anybody to get in trouble. Because they're gonna be out there cooking, barbecuing, having fun and visiting and stuff. It's not gonna be, you know, a beer fest or anything. It's gonna be very low-key. So I'd just like to admit that.
Thank you, is there any questions?
Your Honor, I, I would comment that I think this is a normal kind of activity that we give these permits for. I think the only thing that brought this one to our attention is that they specifically said it's for a one-year-old's birthday party. If they would've just said for a birthday party, probably nobody would've said a thing. Um, I think they still have to follow the same rules that everybody else does regarding underage drinking and all that kinda stuff, and, and so I would.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, uh, all in favor of approving the open container permit, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I, I don't, I, I didn't hear the mayor's vote on those.
Lars?
I, I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I vote yes.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll have the public hearing and consideration of the restaurant liquor license for Les Compliments Cafe and Catering LLC. I think I said that right. Um, city clerks report, please.
Yes, Your Honor, the city clerk's office received a, uh, new restaurant liquor license application from Les Compliments Cafe and Catering LLC. Doing business is Les Compliments Cafe. Mary Ann Burt is here tonight, in case you have any questions. The application has been certified as complete by the Wyoming Liquor Division, the fee has been paid, we've advertised for the public hearing, and everything is in order.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing at this time?
Your Honor, I move that we, uh, open the public hearing, second.
We have a motion in a sec, a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak? The Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Your Honor, I make motion to, close the public hearing. Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the, um, of the liquor license for Les Compliments Cafe and Catering LLC.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the restaurant liquor license application for Les Compliments Cafe and Catering. Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion regarding this? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing and consideration of the fireworks permit applications for the Riverton Rendezvous and Riverton Little League. Could I please have the city clerk's report?
Yes, Your Honor, the city clerk's, uh, office received two fireworks permit applications, the fee has been paid for both. Um, they have also, um. Do we have anyone from Little League here? Great, thank you, it's mandatory that they attend the public hearing, and I'm representing Rendezvous, good job, Megan. So they've listed the types of fireworks, we've, um, they're going to be required to, uh, uh, inform the public of the event. They've attached a site plan, and, uh, the only last thing is Riverton Rendezvous has not received a letter from the fire chief yet stating that they'll be on-site. But we'll make sure that that happens before, um, the eighteenth of July, so everything is in order for the fireworks permit applications.
All right, thank you, Courtney. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing at this time?
Motion to open the public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, um, I declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak? The Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, at this time, um, I would entertain a motion for the consideration of the fireworks permits for, do I need to do these separately, or can I do them together? Together, okay, for the Riverton Rendezvous as well as the Riverton Little League.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion for fireworks permit, application for the Little League and for the, uh, Rendezvous. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the fireworks permits? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, at this time, we'll consider the North First Street Resurfacing Project Award, uh, could we please have the Public Works Director's report?
Yes, Your Honor. This is the award of a project already approved by the city council. Um, so as you're already aware, the Fix Our Road Citizen Committee, um, approved a recommendation and directed staff to bring that recommendation to council to do a resurfacing project for First Street. This, uh, project goes from Pershing to Sunset and includes the replacement of damaged curbs and also an asphalt overlay. Um, advertisement period for this project began on May twenty-fourth, and it also was in the paper on the thirty-first. Also listed on publicpurchase.com. Bids were received and opened on June tenth, two thousand and fifteen, with the following results. Seventy-one Construction of Riverton, Wyoming, at two hundred and fifty-eight thousand thirty-five dollars. And Dave's Asphalt Company of Riverton, Wyoming, one hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred dollars. Staff reviewed the bids and, uh, ensured that they were responsive. As a result, staff recommends that the city council award, uh, the bid to Dave's Asphalt Company in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred dollars. Currently, um, the one percent fund sits at two-point-two million if we subtract the obligations already by the city council. Tonight, we have four things going before the council regarding the one percent fund. If all of those are awarded, um, that fund will then be reduced to one million two hundred and sixteen thousand and change. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Butterfield. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion on awarding the bid for the North First Street Resurfacing Project?
Your Honor, I, I make the motion to, uh, approve the North First Street Resurfacing Project to Dave's Asphalt Company. Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
When will this start taking place?
This will take place as soon as we can get the contracts actually executed. So it will take a, a couple of weeks, um, so that Dave's can get, Dave's Asphalt, excuse me, can get their bonds in place and their insurance in place, and we can execute the contracts. Once they're executed, we will give them notice of, notice to proceed, excuse me. So, take a couple of weeks just to the administrative side of things, contract.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, we'll move on to the North Sixteenth Street West Resurfacing Project, can we have the Public Works Director's report on that one?
Yes, Your Honor. This project is very similar to the one that you just approved, and in fact, was brought towards the body at the same time for approval for advertisement to bid. Um, this involves the resurfacing of North Sixteenth East, and it also includes the concrete repair associated with that overlay. Um, staff put together plans and advertised this project on the twenty-fourth and thirty-first of May, two thousand and fifteen. And bids were opened on June tenth, two thousand and fifteen, with the following results. Seventy-one Construction Incorporated of Wyoming, of Riverton, Wyoming, at four hundred and eighty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And Dave's Asphalt Company of Riverton, Wyoming, for four hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and eighty. Again, staff reviewed these bids to ensure that they were responsive to bid requirements, and they were. As a result, staff recommends that the council awards the bid to Dave's Asphalt Company in the amount of four hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Butterfield. Um, at this time, the Chair would entertain a motion on, uh, to award the North Sixteenth Street East Resurfacing Project?
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the North Sixteenth East Resurfacing Project and award it to Dave's Asphalt Company for four hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is the Rendezvous, Rendezvous School Neighborhood Concrete Project Award, can we have the Public Works Director's report?
Yes, Your Honor. This is another force-recommended project, this, um, is a concrete-specific project, and will be, um, completed in the neighborhood around Rendezvous School. Involve streets like Elizabeth, Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth Street. This, uh, project was brought before the council on March third and was advertised for bid on May twenty-seventh and third, two thousand and fifteen. Bids were received and opened on June eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, with the following results. Triple-A Building Services of Powell, Wyoming, at three hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Schneider Construction Incorporated of Warland, Wyoming, at three hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Seventy-one Construction Incorporated of Riverton, Wyoming, at four hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. And Dave's Asphalt Company of Riverton, Wyoming, at three hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. These bids were all reviewed to ensure that they were responsive, they were, and staff recommends the council award to the low bid, which is Triple-A Building Services of Powell, Wyoming, in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butterfield. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion on the, um, the Rendezvous School Neighborhood Concrete Project?
Your Honor. I would move that we approve the Rendezvous School Neighborhood Concrete Project and award it to Triple-A Building Services for three hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? Motion passes. All right, and then finally, we have the, um, Pavement Assessment Contract Award, can we have the Public Work Director's report on that?
Yes, Your Honor. This is something that we're bringing up to you to keep you informed. Um, as you are aware, when we were proposing this project and even talking about the award to the consultant, I mean, it was based off of qualification. As a request for qualification bid process, um, we are required to analyze the ability of a contractor, or I should say, firm, to provide the services requested by the city. The seven-member selection committee, as you remember, um, reviewed six submitted selections of, submittals of qualification. And from that review, IMS Infrastructure Management of Arizona was selected as the most qualified bidder for this pavement assessment pavement management plan. At the May fifth, two thousand and fifteen council meeting, after some discussion, um, city council followed the advice of the selection committee. And in a six-to-one vote, the city council awarded the pavement assessment management plan to IMS Infrastructure Management with the caveat that staff would then go and review the fee estimate from IMS and ensure that it was, um, within our budget and also within the needs that we had for the city. So, following the May fifth council meeting, staff opened the independent fee estimate from IMS and began, began the negotiation process for this, um, service. And during that process, um, the estimated total from IMS was eighty-two thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. As you remember, when staff proposed this project, it was estimated that the total cost for this service would be around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, therefore, the estimated total from IMS is about seven thousand dollars cheaper than what was, um, estimated originally by staff. The following services were included in this estimated total for eighty-two thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. The base service of doing the original analysis and also preparing the pavement management plan of thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. A subgrade deflection testing analysis for eight thousand dollars. Um, the collection of images for two thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Um, right-of-way assets data collection for three thousand and eighty dollars. Sign support database development for a thousand seven hundred dollars. And curb and gutter database development for eight thousand four hundred dollars, finally. This also included, they call a product that is IMSVIEW, which is a web-based GIS program that's an open architecture program that anyone can have access to within the city, that will provide the backbone to visually, um, interpret the data that we receive from this pavement management plan. It will include the pavement rating that will be done by their, um, rating vehicle. It will also include images that they record. It will also take photos of the curb and gutter, of signs that we have created a database for that, that is similar to most GIS programs where you can click on any attribute, see the information necessary, for example, the pavement condition of a certain road, condition of a certain sign, the condition of a certain section of curb. the condition of a certain section of curb and gutter. It's very visual, it's, it's right before you and it's easy. And that is for $7,500 and that brings the total to $82,800. IMS is already scheduled to perform an assessment study in Natrona County in the month of August. If the city council still feels confident with their selection of IMS, we can go ahead and execute a contract with them and hopefully have them within the city of Riverton in July or sometime around that August date when they're already in. So the, the, the choice that the city council has is to direct staff to execute a contract with IMS, um, for the $82,808. Or if you have any questions, we can negotiate further on the services that staff negotiated. Again, uh, the current 1% fund amount is about 2.2 million after awarding the previous three projects and then this included about $1.2 left. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butterfield. All right, um, the chair would entertain a motion on the award of the pavement assessment contract.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'll make the motion to approve, uh, the payment to IMS for $82,808.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one question.
Please.
Uh, Mr. Butterfield, how long do you think, uh, how long do the IMS expect the project to take?
In total, it'll take them, um, about three to four months. The data collection itself will be done in a couple of weeks. That is one reason why their, their bid came in a little bit, little bit lower. They could save on the overhead for time for their employees because they can collect the data a little bit faster, the tool they're using. However, the interpretation and the establishment creation of the management plan will take some time. And so from the start of the project, when we actually have a, a deliverable, a final product, I would estimate it to be.
Your honor, what is that, what does that gonna consist of, your, the, um, finished product?
Your honor, that will include a live spreadsheet, which the company previously kept in-house, but they are now making it available to their clients. This spreadsheet will track, um, as spreadsheets do, all the data they collect. It's a very complex spreadsheet, but we've reviewed it, confident staff will be able to manage it and, uh, make updates as well. So anytime that we do a overlay or any type of pavement treatment, we can input the data and it will reassess the condition of that pavement. So we'll receive that deliverable, it's live spreadsheet with all the data they collect. We'll also be receiving the IMS Viewer, um, package, the web browser, and it will be completely created. Um, there are examples that we looked at and it's, it's very user friendly. I think it would be a great tool for the council and the force, um, to review, simply because sometimes when you look at lists of data, kind of drowned in the black and white. However, this viewer allows us to view our streets and see basically red, green and yellow. So you're, you're seeing all the red areas that need immediate work, the green that's doing pretty good and yellow would probably need some addressing. So that's, that's really what we'd receive, get a report from them, a final report, and then all the other data will be compiled either into that spreadsheet or put into that IMS Viewer. And, uh, it's about every 30 feet that they store an image. So when you're on that online portal, you can click on a section of road and every 30 feet, you are seeing the actual condition of what they surveyed. Um, there are several communities in the state of Wyoming alone that have had IMS Viewer come back and refresh that every few years and that's an option we can explore in the future if it's higher. But there's a lot of data available that's easily processed. Those would be the two main things we'll receive from them.
Councilman Bailey.
Um, I guess question for Kyle. I guess are the fees that you have listed here, do they reflect us taking advantage of them being in Natrona County already, uh, for mobilization and that kind of stuff?
These are the fees that they, your honor, there's the fees they provided in their fee estimate. So yes, it, it does incorporate that. I'm sure they took it off of their mobilization. It doesn't really compare a price of whether or not they would be in Natrona beforehand or not. They did list a number of other optional services which we elected not to pursue. For example, sidewalk analyses, ADA ramp analyses. We already kind of know where our deficiencies are with our ADA ramps. So we elected.
And then I had one other question. Where this is gonna happen in late July or August, where does that fall in regard to where some, where we're gonna be with some of these construction projects? I guess I hate to have them survey a piece of street and then have us overlay it two weeks later. So to me, if, if it's gonna be three or four months before we're gonna get real data anyway, to me, we might be to our advantage to wait or to push that farther into the summer so that we include current data, which is the work that we're gonna do this year into that so that we're not turning around and having to have you guys enter that we just resurfaced a street that they analyzed a month ago.
Your honor, that's an option. I would hate to delay them and try and schedule them to come back later in the summer or in the early fall. The nice thing about the live spreadsheet and also the open architecture for the IMS Viewer is it's very easy for us to update that. And really, what we're looking at for our pavement surface projects this year are First and Sixteenth, which you just approved, and chip seals for the Animal Kingdom subdivisions and also Broadway and. So when they come through, those projects will either be underway or get completed. We'll have to manually adjust that PCI after the fact.
Any other discussion? Um, Mr. Butterfield, was there any other optional services that we, I mean, I'm just kind of curious what types of things we had available that we didn't.
Sure, I'd be happy to go over that with you.
Thank you.
Your honor, listed in their fee estimate proposal, the optional services, some of which are included in, in what we presented were the subgrade, um, analysis, and that's an analysis of what's beneath the asphalt, so the road base and its upgrade. We opted for that. They had an option for a final council presentation. We felt that we could do that and not have to pay them to come up from Arizona. Again, the sidewalk database development, sidewalk obstruction survey, ADA ramp compliance survey, and those are the three that we chose not to go forward on.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Next thing on the list is Resolution Number 1319, uh, Federal Aviation Administration Grant for the Airport Improvement Project 39 Runway 10 Reconstruction. Public Work Directors report.
Thank you, your honor. I am very pleased to give this report because it's been a long time coming. In fact, since March, it's been about two weeks, every two weeks that this grant was coming. So we're very relieved that this grant is here and it pertains to the runway reconstruction project. Similar to the AIP Grant 40 that you approved at the last business meeting, this grant specifically deals with the runway reconstruction project. However, the last grant dealt specifically with the localizable reconstruction. This grant deals with the entire construction project. Again, uh, the FAA agrees to support 93.75% of the project, including design, whereas Wyoming Aeronautics and the city of Riverton cover the remaining costs, which is a respective 3.75% and 2.5%. In order to execute this grant, uh, we're required to adopt a resolution as a city and this is what's coming before you is support of this grant and execute it. First pay app came in actually this last week, so it's perfect timing because now we can grant drawdown, pay the $900,000 pay app that just. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please read Resolution Number 1319?
Yes, your honor, Resolution Number 1319, a resolution of the governing body of the city of Riverton supporting the execution of Airport Improvement Program Grant Number 3-56-0024-039-2015 from the Federal Aviation Administration.
Thank you. The chair would entertain, entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 1319?
Your honor, I, I'll make the motion to approve, uh, Resolution Number 1319.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Finally, um, we'll have the council committee reports and council members round table. Councilman Cannon, please.
Sir, I move to reconsider the vote on the motion relating to the replat of lots 5-11 Block 7 College View Development.
Second.
A motion to reconsider and a second. All in favor of reconsidering, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
All right, motion to reconsider passes.
Sir. I then call up the motion to reconsider the vote on the replat of lots 5-11 Block 7 College View Development.
All right, so we are now reconsidering the, um, replat of lots 5 through 7 Block 7 College View Development. Uh, is there any discussion regarding that replat? Please?
Sir, I'll, I'll make the comment that, uh, I, I don't do this, I guess willingly other than it's, it's something that the council, I believe, needs to do to correct, um, I guess make right something that we did wrong, uh, back when we did the original vote on lots 5 11. Talking to staff, once again, I, I thank them for making me smart over the last couple of weeks with all my emails going back and forth. Uh, and Mr. Weaver can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is for a replat that as long as the replat does not violate a city ordinance, a code, a law, that basically the council's hands are tied in, in approving that replat. So I guess my understanding is, is that if that repl, if there was something wrong with that replat, that it was gonna violate a code or ordinance, uh, basically it never would have come to the council to start with. And once it did come to the council, being told that it wasn't violating a code or ordinance, that right or wrong, uh, the council really has no choice to approve it. So I, I don't think that was, I didn't understand that in the original vote and I'm not sure the rest of the council said that also, so, but, uh, that's my understanding and, uh, and I believe we need to make that decision, correct that decision.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Your honor.
Yes.
I'm wondering if we have no other reason to approve it, why did it even come before us?
Mr. Weaver, would you like to?
Your honor, that's a good question and, um, and frankly, our code states that it has to come in front of the council right now. And that's something we probably should look at because obviously the example that I've used in the past is, uh, um, a shed on your property. If you meet certain requirements of the city, we don't have a, a reason to say yes or no to that. If, if it's meets setbacks requirements, it's under the score footage, it's approved. It's not based on, I don't like the color of it or I don't, I don't agree with my neighbor being able to put that up there at the time. Um, the, the replat that we're discussing is, is strictly, doesn't meet the lot size requirements, is the proper easements in place, if the road needs to be put in, that that's properly in there. That's what the council was looking at, not on the use of the property. The use had always, already been determined by the zone. Six plexes can already be built in a B residential zone.
I understand that, that they can be.
Please address the chair.
Your honor.
Thank you.
Continue.
Yes.
Um, I understand that, that they could continue to, um, construct those six plexes, then why didn't they?
Mr. Larson. I don't think we can speculate on why they chose to do what they did.
I think we can.
I don't think, I, I personally don't think it's our place. They, they have done what they feel is in their best interest.
I agree with you.
Councilman Bailey.
I guess to me, and I apologize I wasn't here that night, here the entire discussion, but as I understand it, again, the, the zoning for those lots was already in place. Six plexes, six plexes were a approved type of house dwelling in that zone and all they were asking for is to take X number of lots and combine them to make one that would fit desired building that they were going to do. And so again, that all falls within the, the rules that they had to play by. And so again, I think, you know, it's something that we should have approved because they were doing everything they were supposed to. They were building something that was approved within that zone. All they were doing is combining some lots together to make them size fit, no different than we've done in the past where you have somebody that owns two lots adjacent to each other and they want to build their house bigger. We let them combine those two lots into one so that the house can be fit within that lot. So, you know, uh, this is no different than multiple ones that we've done in the past and done this. So, you know, I don't think we can deny somebody the best use of their own property to do that.
Thank you. I, I would say that, uh, I understand that there was a, I believe, a homeowners association or something of that like in place that had certain covenants regarding that land and, and while I certainly feel for the landowners that are currently there that maybe don't wish to have these buildings near them, um, as the city, I don't believe it's our place to enforce homeowners HOA, um, agreements. Now that having been said, perhaps the homeowners would like to pursue legally the validity of that HOA and perhaps, you know, may, maybe a court would side with you on that, but as the city, all we can look at is the zoning and unfortunately, in the zoning, it is absolutely allowed to have a six plex, so that's my comment. Is there any other discussion?
Uh, your honor.
Uh, yes. Come here.
The idea that, that comes into my mind is that maybe we need to look at our zoning. You know, if, if we're gonna say residential B allows for six plexes, what's, I don't know where that number comes from. That seems to be arbitrarily, arbitrarily created. And, and maybe we ought to revisit our residential zoning in some way so that we've really got truly single family, uh, multi-family up to like duplexes in B and then in C, we can go to larger units, uh, because there, there doesn't seem to be in my mind a whole lot of difference between C and B, um, and, and half of Rivertons already, either B or, or BGA. It just seems to me like we haven't, we haven't got that figured out quite right as to what constitutes a residential A, B, C. Um, and I, and I know that it was so hard to get that into place in the first place that everybody hates to think about it. But when we look at our master plan that was approved a couple of, you know, years ago, uh, what I see is a lot of, a lot of kind of conflict between what the master plan talks about from the standpoint of residential uses and our current zoning.
Thank you. All right, is there any further discussion? Um, I don't, I don't believe that we have a open public hearing. We already had that at the last meeting, sorry. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of approving the, um, replat for, can, can you read the, the lots? Sorry, I don't have it right before me. Uh, here we go. All right. All, all in favor of approving the replat of lots 5 through 7 Block 7 College View Development, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, um, council members round table, Councilman Bailey.
Um, thank you, your honor. I was at the force committee meeting this Monday and needless to say, we've got a lot of projects going on in the city and I think that... And I think that citizens ought to be very proud of the tax dollars that they have contributed, and that the visitors to our town and spent money in our town have contributed. Looks like somewhere in the tune of about a million and a half dollars are being spent on improving our roads and curb and gutter and those kind of things. And I think it's a wonderful improvement to our city. And with that being said, the citizens, I think, need to come forward and make sure that they either present to the force committee or to city staff if they see an area that needs some help. Because that's how we put these projects together, is by finding areas altogether that need some different work done, and we can get those done, put them together, and so, you know, we're looking for, again, with our pavement assessment, with citizens' comments, we're going to be developing the additional programs that we're going to put together, and again, put that money to good use in keeping our streets and stuff in good shape. Out of all the things I get comments on as a councilman, this is probably the highest thing that I get comments on, is on potholes in my streets in bad shape or my whatever, and this is how we're going to fix it, and so I think we're very much putting the tax dollars to very good work, and it's going directly to improve our facilities that we all use every day. And we've got a couple other chip seal projects coming down the pike, but, you know, we're going to spend well over that million and a half dollars. Looks like the sales tax revenues are dropping down a little bit, so we don't know how much money we're going to have for the future, but, you know, we're looking very good so far, and I think I think the citizens need to be proud of what's happening in the City of Riverton, so. One of the other things that came up that discussion at the force committee, which I think something that the council needs and the staff need to maybe put on the agenda for the future is, I think we need to look at our school crossing zones with the, you know, the tragedy that happened here in the past. You know, we may need to look at somehow improving our crosswalks, the signage, the, you know, lighting, whatever we need to do to maybe make these crosswalks a little bit safer. We had a gentleman come to us and present one system, which I think they got to the city staff, where they've got some deals where they have some kind of motion detectors or something to where if there is somebody in the crosswalk, there's some LED lights that light up and help notify the drivers, you know, that give them a little more notice that there's somebody in that crosswalk, and so I think that's something we should look at, maybe analyzing how many crosswalks we have, maybe what prioritize those, and look at maybe improving the signage and lighting at those crosswalks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Cannon.
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Martinez.
I don't have anything today.
Councilman Larson.
Your Honor, I attended the favorite meeting of my career is Fremont County Solid Waste Disposal District. And talk about junk. They came to us last year and said we're going broke. And constituted a lot of changes in our collection of garbage, which we had full attendance in January and February, demonstrating that we didn't want rollouts, et cetera. Well, their sheer curtailment of services from last year, at this time, May thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, they're operating their waste as a business. They made forty-seven thousand, thirty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. With the austere program that they've been on, the same period of time, they made eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and forty-eight cents. So the difference is close to two million dollars in total equity that they have increased. And that's going to go towards putting into the graveyard certain landfills that have been closed or going to be closed, and protecting environment. Secondly, the thing that they spoke about was, we have about a seven-year period before we will be taking garbage directly to the landfill, and the site here in Riverton will be done away with. So we need to start budgeting for that. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilman Jibben.
Um, I got to attend the rec meeting on June eighth, and we agreed to match up to twenty-five hundred dollars for the Little League Baseball for the fireworks show. And then also, I was able to attend WHAM this last week, and it was very informative, and I got to meet a lot of really great people. Got to do a lot of networking and see how other communities work and what they actually do, and kind of brainstorm ideas, and got to listen to a lot of really good speakers.
Great. Mayor Baker.
Yes, thank you. I think that there's a, you know, you know, my background in weeds, I always look at weeds whenever I drive down the street, and I see so many people are mowing and cleaning their places up, and they look pretty nice. And I just wanted to thank them for the effort that they've made and encourage those that still need to make an effort in getting their yards mowed. One concern that I have, though, is that inside the city limits, we have quite a few of the state-designated noxious weeds like Canada thistle and Russian knappweed and white top. And the reason that these weeds get on the designated list for the state is their impact in agriculture and their difficulty in control. And so they kind of defy control by the simple means of mowing or cultivation. And it's necessary to be very aggressive with them, and it probably calls for the use of some herbicide judiciously applied in order to actually accomplish a reasonable level of control. And so I would urge people to get in touch with the Weed and Pest District if they've got any of those species so that they can get some good technical assistance and reasonably-priced herbicide. That will make that cleanup process safe and easy. It's really important to try to correct these problems because these weeds become very dominant, and they're difficult to deal with if you're trying to have flower beds and gardens and lawns and that type of thing. And I know there's folks in the community everywhere that would prefer not to use any kind of pesticides, and there certainly are some methods that can be applied if that's the case. But I can tell you that a lot of energy comes in a little can when you buy some herbicide. And to replace that with hand labor is very, very difficult and time-consuming, and makes it difficult for people to actually comply with the requirements of the law. So I just would hope that people that have those weeds or need a little help in identifying them would give us a call and to the weed district or here at the city so that we can provide them with that kind of technical assistance upfront before they get nasty letters. And I know some of those letters are already in the way, but you have to look at this year with all the rate we got, it's going to be a terrific problem. Equally difficult this year is going to be mosquitoes. And so we need everybody to pay attention to little ponds and puddles where mosquitoes may be breeding and either get them filled in or treated in some way so that we don't have as bad a mosquitoes. It could be really bad this year with the river being high. We'll have plenty of mosquitoes produced all around us, and so even though our fogging program in the past has demonstrated that it's about ninety-five, ninety-eight percent effective, when you are really dealing billions of mosquitoes, that still leaves a lot of mosquitoes out there to bite us. So that's my comments for this evening.
Thank you.
I forgot to mention one thing. Sorry about that. But on September tenth at one o'clock in the afternoon, we will have the Region Four WHAM meeting here in Riverton. And I urge everybody to attend that if they can.
Thank you. The Administrator, any comments?
Yes, Your Honor. You probably noticed the mosquito truck was out yesterday, if you could hear the humming going around. So we have started our spraying, which I think it's about fifteen days earlier than last year. I think we started the first part of July last year, so it's good to hear that sound because I know the mosquitoes were out biting. We have an airport board meeting coming up this Friday, and it's going to be up at the airport to witness the construction project, and we'd invite any of the council to go up and witness that too, so that'll be at eight o'clock up there. Also, with our budget amendment, that will be the last Tuesday of the month, so we'll have next week off. Then June thirtieth, Tuesday, five forty-five will be the finance committee, and then six o'clock will just be a special meeting just to approve the budget amendment, so we're all squared away to start the new fiscal year. And then today, IDN myself went in, spoke with the governor a little bit about the honor farm. We're wondering what's going on, we keep on getting delayed. And basically, the issue is, is they're really wanting to find property and secure that up before they go off and sell part of the honor farm, and so that's kind of the holdup right now. We were wondering what the issue was because we've been wanting to attend the SPLC meetings, and they keep being delayed, and it doesn't look like we'll make even the August meeting, so it may be October before it comes in front of the top five elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. As far as my comments, I had the great pleasure of serving as the master of ceremonies for the groundbreaking at the skate park on Saturday. It was a very nice event. They had a Native American drum circle and dancers that actually performed during it, and some really, really nice speeches given. The former mayor was there on warpedness and gave a speech, Steve Peck, Matt Wright, and oh, now his name's escaping me, Chris, Chris, what was it?
O'Neill.
Yeah, who was the president of the skate park. They all spoke. It was a nice ceremony, and so if you'll watch inside the fence down at City Park, you're going to start seeing a lot of dirt getting moved and a skate park taking shape in the not-so-distant future, so that's very exciting. I too had the opportunity to attend the WHAM convention. I wasn't there the entire time, I had to get back for the groundbreaking ceremony, but it was informative and I did enjoy my time there. Like to offer another congratulations to the Rendezvous Committee on Thirty-Five Years. Most balloon rallies really do not last that long. It's something to have an ongoing event that many years, so we should be very proud of that. And, you know, as Councilman Bailey was talking about, you know, the crosswalk idea, I know I've seen in other towns, safe routes to school or something along that line, and I don't, I believe it's like a federal program or something. I don't know if that's something that we could pursue locally to maybe assist with some of the concerns that he brought up, but I think it might be worth a look. You know, I don't think you can ever go too far to try to keep people safe when they're trying to walk and bike and do these things around the community, so. Maybe something to consider. And that's all I have for reports tonight, is there need for an executive session tonight?
No.
Your Honor, I have one other comment that I forgot about the force committee. One of the other items that came up for discussion, which I think is something we need to discuss and have staff work on possibly, but, for example, we're doing a fire hydrant replacement program where we're going around replacing the hydrants, and in that process, they're tearing out some sidewalk curb and gutter. And in a few of the cases, they're putting it back like it was, which is non-ADA specifications. And I think we need to think about maybe adding that to our specifications, that if we are going to tear up a corner, for example, that we put it back to the ADA specifications. That just is money that we're going to turn around and have to spend here in the future someday anyway, putting in, you know, and that's something that if we, if a homeowner was going to do a house and they had this concrete tore up, we'd make them do that. I think it'd be wise to spend, you know, the ounce of prevention money ahead rather than having to come in later and tear up existing curb and gutter and not have to do it ADA. So I think that's something we ought to look at on our specs in the future, do some of those kind of projects, so.
Mr. Weaver, is that something that we can look at at this point? Are we too late?
Uh, Your Honor, I think we can look at that. One of the issues related to that one is that that's being funded out of the water fund because that's a water project. It's not necessarily a force project funded out of the one percent, but that's something we can look at and make sure that we're, because it makes a lot of sense to put it back in compliant instead of out of compliant. So we'll take a look at that.
I don't know if maybe we could look at, you know, seeing if the force monies could pick up the difference, or perhaps we have some money in our own budget to look at. I have no idea, maybe it's a lot more, but I can't imagine that it's in the grand scheme of things that much more, so.
Your Honor.
Yes.
And I agree a hundred percent with Councilman Bailey. In regards to this project, the plan's never really specified as tearing out any ramps. We do have some sections of sidewalk and curb and gutter. But if we do take out any ramps, we would back to ADA compliance. We had some budget constraints, and so when we looked at the locations, we just decided to do the sidewalk only and then try and coordinate with force projects through the ADA ramps at another time. But if we do have to impact any ramps, they do back to the curb code.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.